Report to run. Please stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where wishes stands, one nation under God, in the good soul of the Constitution and its just for all.
Roll call.
Counselor Smalling. Counselor Grossman. Grossman.
Here.
Counselor Hamilton.
Here.
Counselor Woods.
Here.
Counselor Daigle. Counselor Whitaker. Mayor Sumner.
Here. Any media present? Anyone wishing to speak before city council tonight on any subject matter will need to fill out a speaker form and turn it into the forms are available on the sign in table in the back of the room. Please turn cell phones off or silence them during the meeting. Announcement for Zoom attendees, if you're joining tonight's meeting via Zoom, you will automatically be muted upon entry and you'll need to identify yourself with your full name is not already attached to the device being used. You will be unable to unmute yourself. Public comments will only be taken if prior notification was given to the city recorder. Public comment. The purpose of this public comment period is to allow citizens to present information or raise issues regarding agenda items only. There will be a time at the end of the meeting for citizens to speak about off agenda items. A time limit of three minutes per citizen shall apply. All citizens must come up to the microphone. Are there any comments for on agenda? Okay. First thing on the business, and Mr. Grossman, can you come up?
That's you.
Hello, work.
Over here.
All right.
I'm willing to see it. The city and the council would like to present you with a, an award. And it says here, in sincere gratitude for the compassion, guidance, selfless attitude and outstanding leadership you've provided to all of us over the last four years, with great appreciation and fondness, the city of Sutherland staff and council. We will definitely miss you.
My name's Sweet.
Anytime you want.
Okay.
Would you like to say anything?
Oh, just thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Surprise.
Do we Joe, you can come to the next council meeting too, you know, and second, I'm, I'm being serious now, not my clown.
Until this is changed.
Until we swear in, Mr., what's your name again, sir? Adam Sarnasty is the new counselor coming in, former counselor, he's the only counselor left. I mean, he, he, he was, he hired me, he was on the council when I first came in fourteen years ago. So, uh. Yeah. 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 But anyway, you've been through a lot together, be welcoming him, but you're still coming to the next council meeting, but I wanted to make sure we took the time to recognize you tonight because you've been a friend, absolute wonderful patriot to the country and to this city. And, um, this city, you played a critical role in the downtown development and moving things forward. And all that you've given in terms of selfless service, so we still want you to stay active if you will.
Okay, thank you very much.
And you did a wonderful job with hometown heroes.
Mark.
You did a wonderful job of hometown heroes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on to consent agenda, November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four minutes, do I have a motion?
Whether we accept November twelve twenty-four minutes.
Second. I have a motion in a second to approve consent agenda as presented, any discussion? Okay, ready to vote.
Counselor Smalling.
Hi.
Counselor, Counselor Grossman. Grossman.
Grossman.
Counselor Grossman.
Yes.
Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Woods.
I.
Counselor Daigle.
I.
Counselor Whitaker.
I.
Mayor Sumner.
I. On the council business, seismic CMGC contract amendment for Sutherland fire station one. Or do you want it? I guess it didn't say that there was, but go ahead.
I'd like to stack report.
I would like to stack.
Mayor Council, Kristy Gilbert, Community Development. And so in June of this year, you guys awarded a master CMGC construction management, general contractor award to SMB Bay's constructions. And so now we're here to amend that with the next phase of construction, and this is to include the grant funded as well as the additional expansion of the bay funds to accommodate the size of a ladder truck, a future ladder truck in the amount of two million thirty thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And so we ask that you approve that as the next phase of the seismic improvements.
Got a motion. Second. Awesome. I have a motion in a second to approve the seismic CMGC contract amendment for the Sutherland fire station number one as presented, any discussion?
This is to man. Besides to grant, that's what the grant is.
So the grant was approximately two and a half million for the fire station. And so with these services, um, without the extra scope, we're still under budget of that two and a half million dollars. So this covers.
In other words, yes.
Bye.
Ready to vote.
Counselor Smalling.
Hi.
Counselor Grossman.
Hi.
Counselor Hamilton.
I.
Counselor Woods.
I.
Counselor Daigle.
I.
Counselor Whitaker.
I.
Mayor Sumner.
I. On the Oak Street property purchase and sale agreement. Staff report.
Mayor Council, Kristy Gilbert, Community Development. So this is the, um, next phase of the Oak Street property purchase for the workforce housing development. And so through the appraisal, starting with the appraisal down through the environmental, all the additional steps that we have gone through. Um, we are here tonight to get that final approval of the purchase for Oak Street for the five hundred and sixty thousand dollars plus the cost of that phase one and phase two environmental study.
Not a motion.
I move that we approve the purchase of a property for five hundred and sixty thousand dollars for phase one and plus the costs from phase one, phase two environmental study.
Second.
Awesome.
I have a motion to approve in a second for the Oak Street property purchase and sale agreement as presented. Any discussion?
Emmy, do you want to explain?
Mine's the next one.
Here's the next one, all the underlying. Okay, never mind, she's got good news.
Environmental study, how much is that?
Approximately forty-one thousand dollars.
Is that the? Nevermind. Just as a phase one and phase two, so just.
Yeah, that's the, that's the total cost of all the invoices added together for just the portion that would impact our fees for buying.
Any others in special? Okay, ready to vote.
Counselor Smalling.
Hi.
Counselor Grossman.
Hi.
Counselor Hamilton.
I.
Counselor Woods.
I.
Counselor Daigle.
I.
Counselor Whitaker.
I.
Mayor Sumner.
I. On the public hearing supplemental budget committee, staff report.
Mayor, councilors, Tammy Trebridge, Finance Director. This is the next piece on the Oak Street property purchase and sale agreement. This is a public hearing for the resolution twenty twenty-four point twenty-four, which is a supplemental budget adjustment. The hearing is for interested parties to speak regarding the proposed changes to the fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five budget. After the hearing, council is being asked to consider approving the resolution to adopt the supplemental budget adjustment for the fiscal year as described herein. Now, this supplemental budget adjustment is necessary to accommodate your direction to move forward on the Oak Street property purchase. One source of the funds is from the Public Works Operating Reserve Fund. Part of our financial policies, and it was actually pointed out as I was going through the annual comprehensive financial report, that the auditors listed several of our financial policies, and one of them says that the city shall not regularly maintain positive retained earnings in internal service funds. And when an internal service fund builds up retained earnings, a city shall transfer it to other operating funds. So that is what we're doing on one piece of this supplemental budget is transferring some of those reserve funds that have been built up in the Public Works Reserve over into the general fund to go towards this property purchase. There's also a loan from both the water and the wastewater reserve, which you happened to mention at the last council meeting, but it was on this property that that was going to be presented. And the, uh, this opportunity was not foreseeable, obviously, at the time the budget was prepared, and these funds will be recouped as part of the investment strategies for the project. So I foresee that during the first phase of the project, they could potentially all be paid back by the private stakeholders that are going to come to the table for these things. There, uh, was foreseeing an interest only repayment on these funds until those private stakeholders come to the table, and as those monies come in, these funds will be repaid first. And of course, after the public hearing, you have the option to either adopt the resolution or not to adopt the
What about the anticipated property?
I was actually going to bring that up, but that's obviously, I, we were very so there's three tax slots involved in this purchase. And they generate at this point in time approximately twenty-two hundred dollars per year in property tax revenue. The potential after phase one, based on even seventy-five percent ownership of the cottages. So obviously, the nine plaques and the four plaques would be private ownership. But even if it's only seventy-five percent of private ownership on the cottages would generate north of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in property tax revenue once those are developed. Um, so per year, utilizing this property in this manner, it is going to be very helpful for ongoing property tax revenue for the city. Not even counting, um, you know, deed restrictions on subsequent sales or things like that. This is just this, and that is only phase one. So I foresee that it could be a great help boost to our property tax revenue.
If I may say.
You said that the, these funds will be repaid once the stakeholders have made their investment into the properties. Is there a contingency plan in the event the stakeholders don't take part of to in, in capacity for these buildings to repay these funds?
The, the funds could be repaid out of already existing transfers and things that happen. Um, it would just facilitate the general funds staying intact with good contingency funds if we can do interest only payments until we see, obviously, that two hundred and ten thousand that we're transferring from Public Works Reserve is not going to be repaid. So really, the only amounts that need to be repaid are the hundred and seventy-five from each reserve.
That won't affect the Public Works Department in terms of their reserve in the event that they needed to get a new mower or whatever.
No, I promised Aaron, I, the new, new vehicle is covered, I, we can accommodate those things.
A lot of vehicles are kind of
Yeah, no, we're, we would be, we will be fine.
Governor, I, I, I don't want to be over melodramatic or Pollyannaish about this, but I was talking to Counselor Smalling before. Not very many communities are in a position to be able to do what we're doing. But at the end of the day, we were talking, uh, this is actually going to stimulate economic investment in the community, and it should dovetail. We don't know, I mean, there's nothing, uh, you know, in terms of the future, in terms of perfection. But if this goes as we hope it goes, we have major employers investing into it and using it as a tool to bring in employees. And we have employers looking at relocating who choose to come here because they see that there's an asset available for them. At the same time, it's meant to raise property taxes and increase revenues there, but at the same time stimulate the economic development downtown. We want to make it walkable where they come home at the end of the day and they come downtown to eat at backside or multiple other restaurants like Soto Sutherland and others that come, Food Cart Villages, we have it coming, and then other events, boutique retail. I think we're in something special, fingers crossed.
Um, is there a way that if we do get enough of input from other investors that we can pay back the reserves to like public ports since reserves are there for a reason?
Well, absolutely, I can move more money into there if any budget cycle that we decide we need to. The problem is, is that our, this was pointed out, like I say, during the comprehensive annual report is that it is a policy of the city not to allow those, those non-working, non-operating funds like that to generate and hold on to excessive, uh, contingencies.
Reserve funds for if we can't.
This is just the operating reserve. Yeah, they're talking about over, so I'm not draining that fund. There's still funds left over there.
Good question.
Okay. So at this time, I would like to open public hearing and allow public comment, is there any public comment? Okay, at this time, I will close the public hearing. And we'll go to resolution twenty twenty-four point two four supplemental budget, do I have a motion?
I move that we approve resolution twenty twenty-four dot twenty-four. I'll say.
I have a motion in a second to approve resolution number twenty twenty-four point two four supplemental budget as presented. Any further discussion?
Counselor Smalling.
Hi.
Counselor Grossman.
Hi.
Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Woods.
I.
Counselor Daigle.
I.
Counselor Whitaker.
I.
Mayor Sumner.
I. On the city manager report.
It's, it's and we, because we purchase those solar bees for Cooper Creek. And we have, we're using resources from the water, wastewater reserve fund or the water fund. Would it be more beneficial to buy those funds so that we're not paying excessive in those areas with those funds rather than this project rather than getting those paid off or things worth
I'm not sure that I understood your question.
Are you saying, are we paying payments on that? Yeah, because we have the solar bees out at
But we, we paid, we bought those.
But we're making payments on, right? We didn't just buy them out, right?
I think we bought them.
Bought them out, right, so we leased it for six months to see how they were. And then once they, it was established that they worked, then we bought them, right?
Just wanted to make you, just wanted to
Okay. City manager.
Yes, I'd like to talk about solar bees. No, um, so I have two items tonight. Uh, the first one is to remind you of the workshop we're going to do tomorrow evening. Uh, I apologize that it's really important when we worked with the League of Britain Coaches and their lobbying staff and our finance team got together. I think it's important that you see the uh, the impending issues coming down uh, the pike with regards to the financial implications of ballot measures and sustaining, uh, city budgets throughout the state. I've been sending both the mayor and council president article after article after article. Cities like St. Helens, they stopped doing twenty-four hour police service because they just don't have the money to do it. And we want to do a workshop very early on to give you an idea of how our budget looks going into the future and whether or not that may happen to us. So that's important tomorrow. Also, on Friday of last week, we met with the, uh, our homeless response team meets every Friday morning at ten. And, uh, sometimes we talk about all kinds of problem solving, and sometimes we just have breakfast, we had breakfast last week. Uh, but sitting in the meeting and I saw all the remarkable work that's being done that maybe you haven't seen, but it's been a year now. So I asked Dana if he had come up and just give you a, a kind of a slideshow of a year in report of what's going, what's gone on. Uh, what's, uh, and what's going, going on and what he plans for the future. That means you get up and start blocking much earlier during my wonderful little speech.
Buy and practice, I'm here. Thank you, counsel, thank you, mayor, I guess we have a slideshow we're coming up. Uh, I don't know if it's on your screen or behind you. So basically, what you're seeing in the slideshow here is initially when we took over the city in February, the gentleman down in lower center, he was a veteran, he has now transitioned out and he's now at the VA, of course. So go ahead, Bo, you can click it. This also is another view, uh, it's kind of a little mixed up here, so I'll explain. The top one is pretty much in the center is what we inherited from February. Uh, jumping into this past week off to the top right corner is a tent we took out, uh, a Costco tent to satisfy, uh, Aviva Health that shows an expression of uh, concern of seeing those tents as the foliage falls off between the fence line on the, uh, west side. Um, they would like to kind of tone down the what they see at the camp, which we have a plan of, uh, putting up netting so they can't see through the fencing into the camp itself. The bottom left-hand corner also is part of that same tent you see at the top right-hand corner. Um, as residents have moved out throughout the year, the center lower is pretty much what they end up doing all the time is leaving behind all their personal items for the city to clean it up. So to the far right, once we do the cleanup, um, you can see that it's all open, uh, that the field is the debris, uh, debris free. You can go to the next set, Bo. So here's some of the campers inside the actual A-frames that we, the city initially built, uh, when we first took over, which, uh, the top is a resident and then to the right, and actually that, there are a couple, so they both share the same A-frame. Uh, the bottom layer is when we first initially took over and built them right on site, there's about A, A-frames. And they are all full, uh, you can go ahead and click it onto the next one, Bo. So basically, from the rodeo grounds that took out the old bleachers, that picnic tables, we are building picnic tables for the camp out of, uh, used material that, uh, they don't, they were going to actually toss. Uh, top right-hand corner is another mixture. Just this past week, we had a crew come in from a church that wanted to bring in, uh, firewood. And the bottom two is basically they dumped it on the grounds and stacked it for the campers to have heat if they decided to, and that would be an outside fire, not an inside fire on the dwellings. So, next. And basically, these are some super ladies that, uh, get no credit whatsoever. They are at St. Francis Church, they feed the camp on Mondays and Wednesdays, they prepare meals. And we come by and pick them up for the campers and individuals, they encourage them to come to the church also. Uh, if they come to the church, they can have four meals apiece. If they stay at the camp, of course, we, you know, pass out the meals, one per customer, kind of. Uh, to the far right, uh, UCC got ahold of us and wanted to build some A-frames for us. They trade up, they needed a place to have a carpentry class. And so between me and another supervisor there, we went ahead and showed them how to build the A-frame step by step. And UCC picked up the cost for these A-frames, delivered the wood to the maintenance yard. And we built another six more A-frames, which we still have two brand new ones at the maintenance yard waiting to be occupied. And of course, the bottom right hand is what the ladies make for meal to see, you know, what they actually serve. So next. So basically, this is going to be a video to walk through today, and it'll show you what the camp actually looks like. And it'll give you a broadside view, go ahead. So basically, we come into the camp, you can see on both sides, the right away here is wide open. Uh, it's kept up somewhat. And we try and, you know, keep after the campers to kind of keep their area cleaned up. So on the left-hand side, of course, would be, well, we're going to scan the field here. And the new fence that they actually put in that Aaron had brought in, that's the, uh, north side fence, and the field is still open. Uh, there's no more tents actually on the property. We did remove the steel pods out of there because of the traffic that they created. I can't for sure say that there was illegal drugs being sold there, but normally after nighttime, there was considerable traffic there. And I went out there many nights myself, um, so we removed the, uh, steel pods and we put the residents into these A-frames. At this point in time, I think we've lost about six residents have moved on. And, uh, like I say, all these A-frames here are full, these wooden buildings are occupying, uh, campers. And that's one of the new A-frames off to the left, so this kind of scans and gives you kind of an idea of what's going on in the camp. And then this up, on this upper side here is all rock where the, uh, pods were sitting at, the three pods side by side. The fire department has one and there's two over the maintenance yard sitting which are all empty. And we started with eleven tents, the ten by twenty Costco tents. And we're down to two Costco tents at this point. Which, uh, should be removed, but I think we're against the weather because of the when the rain comes in, uh, bringing in equipment is having a problem getting to these, uh, last two, uh, ten by twenty tents. But if you look straight out, you see the blue building on the west side, and that's Aviva Health. And I pay a visit to all the neighbors around there that have businesses and see if they have any complaints, and if we can address the complaints and satisfy those complaints. So I say these are the last two standing, uh, we started with eleven, so we are down to two. And eventually, we can put all A-frames right along that dirt area on the south side. Uh, but as people come in, we'll go ahead and bring in an A-frame from the maintenance yard. If I put it out there, somebody will occupy it and use it for storage or who knows, so. But you can see Aviva Health, basically, you're starting to be able to see right through the fence line as the foliage falls off from the trees. So we will take, uh, the netting that is on the backside on the south side that faces the uh, food vendor back there and move it over to the fence, so. And I'm pretty sure that right now, as it stands, it's going to be kind of hard to get in there. If we get any more rain and we've got a big storm coming in Wednesday, so that should pretty much stop the tear down with the ten by twenty tents for the next few months if we get a break in the weather. Otherwise, uh, the residents know that they have to be removed from these, uh, ten by twenty tents, and they're prepared to, uh, when they get the notice to move. So basically, that, that's it in a nutshell. Uh, residents are down, we're, we started with thirty-six in February, uh, we're down to twenty residents. Uh, there's a flyer that Michelle, I hope you all get the same flyer. We encourage, uh, everybody to come out once a month over to the welfare office on Harvard, there's about forty uh, services that they can, the homeless can take advantage of, and I've only seen one or two participate in it. But, you know, there's housing, there's mental health, there's food, there's pretty much everything you can think of that, you know, somebody would need is there, and I think it's a good thing. Hope to keep it going, so.
Does have the ability to get to this event because it's in Roseburg?
I, I can't hear you.
Do the campers have the ability to get to this event?
We have the minivan at the city hall that we can pick them up and, and take them over. Uh, right, and I offered to them, but when it comes time to leaving. But this, this past one that just happened this past Thursday, we were actually in the midst of tearing down the tent also, so it's kind of stretched. I didn't have the opportunity to take anybody, but I did see a couple of them over there that got transportation on their own. And like I say, we post this on the property and we encourage them to go, so. Yeah.
Yeah, I saw, excuse me, I saw a bunch of propane tanks sitting out there.
Correct, well, we can't throw them in the dumpster, so we separate them. Um, there's a steel bin we'll put them into. Um, it's just basically for holding, somebody needs a propane tank.
Somebody's got propane.
Well, okay, you can, puts out a voucher. If you apply, anyone that's homeless Well, okay, UCAN puts out a voucher. If you apply, anyone that's homeless gets a seven hundred fifty dollar voucher from UCAN. And they make an account at Shell Station, which is right there uh on Old Ninety-Nine. And, you know, you can go down there and fill up as much as you want propane when you hit seven hundred fifty dollars. So they they will, you you know, UCAN's there at the proper at the event there, and they'll, like I say, set you up. So I've got the number. I'm also, you know, tell the people there if they want propane. So.
So they can take the propane into their A frame structure?
No, no, we do not allow that. They can cook outside the A frame, but there's no heating inside the A frame or wood heat.
I think I've heard this before that we can't require them to go there.
Not require. We ask them to go there voluntarily. Uh.
So there's no way that we can do that to try to get them on their feet and get the help they need to.
Well, I'll give you an example. There's a couple there that the state knows about. The lady's pregnant. And that's the most recent A frame we took down, but I put her in the biggest wooden structure. Um I explained to the husband that the state already knows about her pregnancy, and they've already told me that they want to take the child. So this is months ago that I explained to them to start filing for housing. And that's through Douglas County Housing Authority. I've made contact with those people. And they said that they needed to update their application. So every week I talk to them and I say, hey, you're getting closer and closer. So we're trying to make them as comfortable as possible on the property. But at the same time, they're not moving forward. He keeps on saying, well, now she's get, he's giving it off to his wife, and so to get the whole story, they've had three children previous and the state's taking the three.
They're not gonna automatically take the child.
Yes, they are. Well, they gave me the impression. I am not the one to make that call, but the impression they told me is, yeah, they they don't want to see a child and, you know, under those circumstances being brought up. So we're trying to do everything we can.
So long as they're staying in the homeless camp, they're gonna. Well, but that's not our problem.
Right.
So Dana, you said that the population's down to twenty?
Twenty, correct.
So the difference in those of what it started out, how many of those they've worked themselves out to to do better?
Not one. Not a one. They've all kind of gone either to family or to actually make camp. Roseburg, they really don't let me know where they've gone. Um I don't see them in town, so I I just assume. You know, they, like I say, what we find out is we'll come up to after an A frame has been left vacated for about a month. After a month, we'll go ahead and take out whatever they left behind. So and clean it out. But we give it a month, and after that point, we take the possessions and move them down to the transmission shop, and we store that also. So.
What do you think the difference is, like, why are we leaving?
What is the difference for what?
Why are we leaving? Was so few.
Uh well, some didn't like the idea of leaving the steel pods. They wanted that to be in the steel pods. Um but I felt the steel pods, they were getting too comfortable. They're breaking all the rules. They're not listening to anything we're requesting, you know. We're requesting that the residents only be the ones in the pods. We come back, there's five or six of them in the pods. Uh we request that, you know, at least you keep your area clean out front. It got dirty or they they brought in trash. There's got pictures of guys uh just bringing trash into the camp and dumping it, you know? I mean, that's, they kind of rebel a little bit. But I.
Camp looks amazing. Like I was telling Jared earlier, I can't believe the transformation. Like, when it first came on, like, oh, this is Mission Impossible.
It is. It is. I know where you live. You're gonna be next.
Yeah, no, keep it up. Good work.
Well, thank you. Yeah. Well, thanks, Aaron, too. I mean, he's worked closely with me, too, you know, when it comes time to cleaning up, you know, he gives me a couple of guys. So it's it's not a one man. It it's a struggle, you know, it's up and down.
Out of the thirty-two, how many of them are still there as part of the boy who's having there? Or have they all rotated and other individuals have come in?
We have, I'm gonna guess about six regulars that'll never leave. They're gonna stay. Some have lost their their ten by twenty tents, but they've, you know, they've gone into the A frames and they're making the best of it. Um some had dogs and and we just, the animals, you know, we said it's either the dog or you. And so and there's some we've had to trespass, uh because they're just like not gonna listen at all. Uh constantly break the rules and bring people into the camp that are going after the women. Uh giving them a hard time. We did have an incident with a lady in the camp that uh she got a restraining order against one, one person, which had to been trespassed. So, you know, when it comes to that, there's no more talking. So, you know, you you try and discuss the problem with these people and they deny it. So I've done an interview with the lady and with the gentleman that, you know, had the problem, and the gentleman denied everything, and so he got trespassed. So I actually had outstanding warrants also, so he got arrested. Spent a little time. So, but he's out.
It's just heartbreaking that what we try to do for them, what you're doing out there. And they don't want to benefit themselves. They, it's just some of those are just what's left. I mean, they're just a big mess.
Yeah, it does. Um like I say, you know, you try and talk to them and you try and encourage them to get work. Um and I think starts with personal hygiene and getting a place where you can go through. Well, back this up to the, some of the few people that started originally when we initially took over the camp. Uh a veteran that went over to the VA, he he just walked off. He left. And he has a son there at the VA that's in housing and didn't say anything. So yeah, that's, you know, so it's hard to say. I mean, when I work with Douglas County Housing Authority, they tell me about this. And I I explained to them that he did not come back to the camp. So, yeah.
Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Good job.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Anything else? On the council comments, remember monthly meeting time is limited. Please ask questions or make statements that are likely to benefit the group. Individual comments and questions that can be handled on a one-on-one basis should be handled outside the meeting. Counselor Smalling.
Uh I already told Dana, good job, but I would keep Jerry the same thing, you know, camp's made such a turnaround. It's crazy.
Yeah.
Wasn't like fifty people at one time down there? Fifty-seven or something like that?
Fifty-two.
That seems more manageable for our size of the house. And uh good job on Aaron in building up a reserve in his department.
Oh, Ross.
I'd just like to thank everybody. I've enjoyed being uh on the uh city council. And uh I'll still want to sit with you. Uh even though I'm getting older all the time, um but I'm still here. Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor President Hamilton.
I just wanted to thank you for your service the last several years. What you do, what you did for downtown development. And um just just all that you've been on the council. Appreciate you. Um I just wanted to tell everybody Merry Christmas. I figured I'd be down the list and been said that a hundred times. Anyway.
As for Woods, um I want to say thank you to Aaron's Department. Um I called in about some things that were put out and department came out immediately and took care of some graffiti. Which was really nice to see. Our city just be so responsive and taking care of something that should have never happened. And also thank you, Councilor Ross, for your service. Also, um Adam, thank you for saving the day when we had the Christmas tree lighting in the park because you have turned the tree on. Thank you for showing up and doing that.
Counselor David. Counselor Whitaker.
I love our Christmas decorations. Right down the street, you see them hanging, you go watch the trees go. It's just, it's really uplifting, and I know the amount of work it takes to put those things up and down. And so we appreciate your part in that. And um I've found in the last week or so, a couple asleep in places where they're not supposed to. So and then the police department know and in short order, there's a patrolman shows up and it's a matter of. So it's nice. It's great.
And definitely, I want to thank everybody for all their work and putting up the Christmas decorations, Adam, all your work in doing them and public works. So the tree lighting uh went off great. Um it's a little bit of hitches on getting the tree lit, but that's okay. It it was beautiful once it lit up. And uh so thanks for everybody who made that evening as nice as it was. And uh thank you, Phil, for your service. Uh really uh enjoy working with you. And Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and Happy Yule for whoever celebrates what. Anything else you can celebrate?
Madam Mayor, I just had one real quick thing. So are you okay with keeping the seating this way? And we'll just put uh future counselors on the Husky here, or do you want to want us to just mix it up?
Oh, I think it it's good him putting right there.
Okay.
Yeah. Unless you'd like to swap and put him down.
Yeah, if you're sick of me, you can go over there.
Up to the front of the. Yeah, that's good. Okay, public comment. Comment. The purpose of public comment is to allow citizens to present information regarding items off the agenda. Time limit of three minutes per citizen shall apply. First one is Genevieve. Uh if you can come right up here, state your name. You live in the city of Summerville?
I I do. Um in another ten days, it'll be a whole year that I've been here in this most beautiful place I've ever been. I moved here from Florida and I love it here. Everyone's so nice, and I love the Christmas lights. It is so beautiful here. I want to live and die here. It's wonderful. So um, okay, and I have pictures on my phone to show you if you're interested, but so thank you for hearing me talk. Um I'm requesting, if I may, that a street light please be put in at the end of my street um for safety reasons. I can't afford to pay for this out of my own pocket. I only make eighteen hundred dollars a month on social security disability, and I need your help. I know I don't look disabled, but I am. Um I'm a survivor of domestic violence and stalking, and I'm a participant in the Office of the Attorney General Address Confidentiality Program um for survivors of domestic violence. And um because I'm on social security because of what my ex-husband did to me from the head chest and abdominal trauma that I sustained. So um I'm prone to passing out if it's too hot or too cold. Um I have an indefinite injunction against him, and should my ex-husband ever locate where I reside, I would like to be able to see outside to help myself. Um so I reside at the end of the street on Forest Heights, and my address is confidential. Uh where seven houses on my street, only two of them are occupied, and my house is one of them where I'm occupied. Um the other five houses are homes that were abandoned because of mid Oregon builder. I don't know if you've heard of them. Okay. Yeah, so you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, actually, we now know where you live, so.
I kind of figured, but um unfortunately, the builder never finished them.
Yeah.
So but I got my house for what I could afford. It's a nice house, so I got it. Um there are dense woods beside my home that leads to Cooper Creek, as you know. Um and in September, I saw a cougar on my hill, which scared the world out of me. Um and it was only a few feet from me. I was like, okay, I'm going back in. Um and there's only one street light on my street, and none of that light comes down to my home, and I I have pictures that I can show you. Um so I have um pictures of my street light at night, and I'm the only person at the end of my street. Because there's me, and then there's two homes that are abandoned, and then there's my neighbor, Ramona, and then two more houses that are abandoned. And there's nothing across the street from me. So it's just me and darkness and it's spooky. From what I understand, it costs around eight thousand dollars to install a street light. And last year, I spent four thousand in my house taxes when I bought my home, and then another four thousand this year. So um I was hopeful that maybe, I know those monies go appropriated to other things, but technically, I've kind of paid into it already. But I know money's a factor. I don't know if that staves off anything, but whatever the electors may decide, um I thank you in advance for your time and your compassion and consideration.
Your your time is really up, but we'll take care of you. Uh that's kind of a staff-driven initiative, and we got Aaron and a finance director.
Heard about you. Hi.
We'll work with you.
Good things from Gary. Good things from Gary.
I used to have some extra money.
Just with that amount of your public works reserve.
Aaron, do you want me to give you my address?
I know where you're at.
So much. Should I just fill it out over here so someone else can talk?
Uh Goldie Stephen Dollar?
I'm Goldie Stephen Dollar. I am one of the homeless people that, one of the sixteen that have left the camp since Dana's came into um and I'm I am shocked and surprised at the things that were said tonight. Um the sixteen that have left have left because they've been bullied, including myself. I was moved out of the camp without uh being able to leave. I was forced. Uh I was staying with somebody while I was working with them. Um and he moved me out before the thirty days was up, and he still has my belongings. I haven't seen them at all since April. I made a complaint with the city and still haven't gotten my belongings back. I've spoke with him. I spoke with him and Aaron. I've asked for my belongings. I've not gotten them back yet. Because I don't have a car to carry them away. Um either way, doesn't matter because basically I still don't have my belongings. Um I encourage all of you to go down and spend an hour or two hours inside one of these A frames. Because I lived in one, and you have to crawl in on your hands and knees and stay seated the whole time you're in there. There's no way to heat it, and there's air leaks all around in every one of them. It's cold. I I mean, there's nothing fun about these play, these A frames, and you have nowhere to store anything. So how are you supposed to to have anything, to want a better life? And the shower trailer that was there, Dana took that away because it's it's a privilege. It's not a right to be able to shower. So maybe you guys should really think about things, and while you guys are in your nice warmhouses and enjoying your Christmas with your family. Because there's not even a community center for them to sit down and eat dinner at at the commu- at the homeless camp. You know, I won't ever go back because Dana's not the first one that's taken all my belongings from the homeless camp. I've been kicked out three times. Twice Wayne took my stuff, and now Dana took it in April, and I won't ever go back. You know, I'm applying for my disability, and it's hard to get sometimes, you know, but I'll get back up there. But a lot of these people, they just need a handout, not a handout, and they're getting handouts and hi- and being told to hide, you know, and you know, if they had the, if electricity and had water, you know, they would be a lot cleaner. Or someplace that stores their stuff, it'd be great. But, you know, it's just things, I think things need to be assessed differently, you know, and and when people put hands on people and they bully them and they push them out of the homeless camp, that's why people are gone. Because they don't want to put up with that.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that has public comment? Well, that is the end of our meeting, and I wish everybody uh Happy New Year and a Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you.
And remember tomorrow evening, six thirty, Budget Committee training, right here. Yep.